You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, our service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford.
One minute.
Jamie, you didn't give me permission to record this one.
Oh, one minute, sorry. All right.
Recording in progress.
Okay, that answers that.
Katie, I just gave you permission as well.
Yep, recording.
All right, this is a special meeting of the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Agency. It is 7:04 on July 28, 2022. My name is Peter Basserman. I am chairman of the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Commission for Branford. The evening's meeting was noticed. It's a single item on the agenda. BCTV is recording this meeting this evening. It's available on Facebook or on Channel 20 on the local community television. We certainly thank BCTV for their involvement and participation in recording the meeting so that the public can understand what's going on in the inland wetland area. We are conducting this meeting in accordance with Public Act 223. And this is a Zoom meeting, a virtual meeting. It would be helpful if you would mute your device when you're not speaking. Certainly unmute when you need to participate. Anything else that I left out, Jamie?
I don't believe so.
Okay. We're going to take a roll call first for the commissioners. Peter Bassman, present, and please announce yourself.
Melissa Habenton is present.
Commissioner Boda, present.
Commissioner Meinsen, present.
And staff.
Jamie Frederick, Inland Wetland Agent, present.
Katie.
Katie Blanchett, Inland Wetland Associate, present.
Wonderful.
Just a quick, this is Commissioner Boda, Jamie. Forgive my lapse of memory, but which have we transitioned to are the regulations that we just adopted or are we continuing to use? Okay.
Yes, still on the regulations that the commission's been using for the last five years or so.
Okay.
We have an enforcement action this evening. Ceasing Correct Number 220701, Six Partridge Lane. It's clearing and earthwork within a conservation deed restricted area. And this is the just cause hearing that had to be conducted within 10 days of the issuance of the cease and correct. Jamie, I'm going to ask that you kind of bring us up to speed with this activity. And then it sounds like Ms. Shansky, you're going to want to make the introductory comments. Fine, thank you. Jamie?
Jamie Frederick, Inland Wetland Agent. So the Inland Wetland Office is right around from the building counter and the planning and zoning counter. A resident had come in looking for information on a property line. They were concerned about some clearing that was happening at Six Partridge Lane. I had recently been in discussions with somebody regarding that property and the fact there was a conservation restriction. So I did a drive by inspection to hopefully identify that the clearing was outside of the conservation restriction area. Upon the drive by inspection, I saw that the clearing appeared to be within the restriction area. So I contacted Adam Greenberg, the person that had come into the office previously to ask about some activities with planning and zoning. And Wetlands also provided some information as well. I mentioned to him my concerns and I asked if he was onsite. He said he wasn't, he was actually out of the country, I believe. But I saw that there was a contractor onsite, so I asked if I could go on the property and talk with the contractor about the activity and see if there are any concerns or things that needed to be addressed, to which he agreed. So I did go on the property and I talked with the contractor. It appears that majority of the activities within the restriction area, the activity includes clearing of vegetation. It looks like there was material brought in the site to level out. And my understanding is that they're looking to put in a half basketball court, relocate a batting cage that was already in the conservation deed restriction area and put in a field for Little League baseball that the neighborhood kids could use. So the deed restriction prohibits any vegetation removal and some additional activities as well. So I did issue a cease and correct order. I told Adam Greenberg that this would have to come before the commission and that I wasn't sure if the conservation restriction would allow for the proposed activity, but that would have to be reviewed by the commission. So I have the letter available, I have photos available, and I have the conservation restriction and the site plan as built for the property. And I have some reference materials from the subdivision approval. There's nothing in the file for this particular property post the approval for the subdivision that it was a part of. There was no permit required for the actual development of this specific lot aside from the subdivision approval that was granted, I believe, in let's say 2002, it might have been 2004. So does the commission want me to start off by showing some of that information? Or do you want to see what?
Jamie, this is Commissioner Boda. Could you possibly orient us with the pictures and the site map of just which property it is and where the conservation deed, the area that it covered versus the work that was done?
Okay, so this is on the north end of Flax Mill Road, just south of where it ties in with, I forget what it is at that point. I think it's Peach Road. So it's one of the corner properties of the subdivision. The residential house and most of the improvements are on the western side of the site. And the conservation deed restriction takes up a lot of the eastern side of the site. As you can see, it encompasses the wetlands and much of the upwind review area. So I will jump over real quick. Different orientation, you'll see the houses here, the pool would be back here. And this is the wetland area. And this line right here is the conservation restriction limits. And everything below that, which would be east of that, is part of the conservation restriction area. I can walk through the photos real quick. So this is a picture from up by the street where I could see that there was some activity that appeared to be within the restriction area. And at that point is when I called Adam Greenberg. I believe, I don't know for sure, and perhaps it can be clarified for the commission tonight, but I believe that these stakes were the 100-foot upwind review area from the onsite wetlands. I'm not entirely sure because as we continue through the pictures, you'll see it looks like there's another one here. It appears to be approximately where the 100-foot upwind review area would be. So there was silt fence onsite, but it wasn't properly installed. I asked that it be properly installed, which I believe it has been. I just received some photos that I can share with the commission later if you would like. There didn't seem to be any active erosion occurring. And there are a bunch of wood chips, which is helping to hold everything in place and keeping it pretty stable. It does look like there was some fill brought in relative to some of these trees here. Right here, you can see a piece of the ash roater for the batting cage, which was existing in the conservation restriction area. I think they moved it to a slightly different location though. Here, I think this is the base probably for some of the like basketball court improvements. I'm not sure. And we're looking towards the house, you can see that here, and the pool would be over here.
Jamie, is Commissioner Bassman, was that sand, was that brought in for the basketball?
I would let, I would let the violation team respond to that.
Okay.
This is looking back up towards the road and the wetland, onsite wetland area. Again, just a further back picture. This is looking a little bit towards the houses on Flax Mill Road. And there is an additional wetland area offsite on the Flax Mill Road properties, which abut the subject property and the upwind review area for the, from that wetland extends onto the subject property. So this is along that eastern property line. I'm not entirely sure where the property line is relative to the material. The wetland area would be, I think, just off the picture to the left. And then this is, I believe, I think this is looking the other way towards Flax Mill Hollow. And then this is a picture kind of of the whole area of activity. So I'm assuming, I could be wrong, and I'll let it be corrected if I'm wrong, that this is probably where the basketball court was proposed. I think that that was indicated by the contractor when I was onsite because they were getting ready to pour the concrete, which I advised them not to do until they knew if they had approval or not. And then over here, you can see that the batting cage, ash roater. And I think that this is part of the batting cage over here as well, which would leave this the likely location for the baseball field.
What's the, this Commissioner Bass, what's the area, total area disturbance?
I'm not sure. I would guess somewhere around 9,000 to 13,000 square feet. But I didn't really try and estimate it while I was in the field. So I was just looking at the aerial imagery and 13,000 square feet would be if it was the total, like, that's kind of the max that I think it would be. I don't, I don't think it's necessarily that high. I think it's probably closer to 10. But I'm not sure.
Is Commissioner Bassman again, and how much of that is in the conservation deed restricted area?
Again, I'm not really sure because I don't think the conservation restriction area was marked out in the field. But going back to this map here, I believe that the conservation deed restriction is about 40 feet off of the house. And then when you go to look at the GIS map and where the drop off is, because if you can, I don't know if you could see in the pictures, but it kind of drops off to get down to the area that's been modified. And you can see there's a steep slope right here. So you can see the steep slope. So I'm thinking it's down in this area. And I think a majority of it's in the conservation restriction because it runs somewhere, I think, just below the slope.
Thank you. Anything else, Jamie? Oh, I know one thing would be helpful. If you have the text for the conservation deed restriction, can you post that?
Sure. So this is the conservation deed restriction that applies to four of the lots from the subdivision. And I think particularly as far as the Inland Wetland Commission is concerned, number three applies. It says the following are prohibited unless written permission is granted by the Inland Wetland Water Course Agency as noted. A, no living, dead, or dying trees or other vegetation is to be cut or removed except with permission of the agency. Dead or dying trees that pose a safety hazard may be cut down but are to be left on the ground where they fell in the designated natural area. Also with permission and basis species may be removed. B, no planting of grass or other vegetation is permitted except with permission of the agency. And C, no fertilizers, herbicides, or other pesticides shall be applied or used except with permission of the agency.
Again, thank you. Any other material that you want to share at this point, Jamie?
Um, I think that quickly summarizes it. I don't know if all the commissioners had a chance to take a look at the cease and correct letter ahead of time or would appreciate a review of that or?
Just to complete the record, why don't we post that?
Um, so the activities that I cited are clearing of vegetation within the conservation easement area, which is to remain in a natural state for subdivision and site plan approval and within 100 feet of offsite wetlands located to the east of the site and possibly within 100 feet of wetlands located on the subject site. And same thing with grading slash earthwork. And then I got into some of the general observations. My understanding that it's a half basketball court in a field for Little League baseball and relocation of an existing batting cage that they're looking to conduct. And then requesting that they stop any additional activity aside from correcting the erosion controls, confirm receipt of the letter and intent to attend the meeting and reply with the letter. If they have a site plan depicting the intended activity to submit that, I didn't receive one, so I don't think they do. But I do know that they've started forming a team to create a site plan. And I think that it would be good for the commission to provide context as to what it is that you're looking to see as far as that regarding the activity that has occurred and any activity that either is required to correct it and/or whether or not an application to pursue the desired activities could be feasible. Although you don't want to get into a predetermination there. And then as soon as possible, yeah, correct their suppression controls.
Okay, and one last thing, I think you mentioned you had some update on the erosion controls.
Yeah, so when I turned on my computer, I did see that I had, I was talking briefly with Adam Greenberg and I said if he could send over some photos. Going to the wrong screen here. If you could send over some photos that it would be helpful for the commission to see. So they're really small, so I'm not sure how much we're going to be able to actually see, but I'll try screen sharing them right now. Can everyone see that? Not sure if it's going to let me scroll through them individually. So it does look taut, like it's been likely been towed in. And it does look, it appears from the photos that it's been.
Okay, thank you. I guess it'd be prudent at this point, I guess, for some comments from Ms. Shansky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Am I audible?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Well, I am Attorney Marjorie Shansky and I am representing Adam Greenberg this evening. I am here with Mr. Greenberg, with Chuck Mandell from Stevenson Associates and David Lord, our soil scientist. Our team that we have assembled to respond to this cease and correct order. Also on our team is John Cunningham for Landscape Design. I want, I have essentially two comments to make before members of the team contribute. One is that this is a very, very interesting conservation restriction. And I don't mean to get into the weeds about this because we are here. We have formed a team and we are, you know, poised to submit an application to this commission when, when we have all the facts that we need to do so. But this conservation restriction is not held by the agency. It is more in the nature of a declaration that is binding on the four lots to which it attaches. And indeed, it is part of the subdivision and wetlands approvals. But it's a fine point, but I think an important legal point that, that if there were a violation of those conditions, if there is a violation of your regulations, we're all about curing that. I am not conceding to the authority or the standing of the agency to enforce the conservation restriction on its face as it's drafted and recorded in the land records. And again, that may feel to you like a distinction without a difference, but from a legal perspective, it has moment. So I say that. But again, that's not to undermine the fact that we're here, you have our full attention, and we are underway. The other thing I want to observe is that Ms. Frederick required several things, four things essentially. One, that activity be ceased, and that has been complied with. And on the correction side, number one was to contact her and confirm receipt of the cease and correct order, which was done. Number two is to attend the meeting this evening, which we have done. And number three is to correctly install the soil erosion and sediment controls, which we believe is the case. And these later photographs are probably demonstrating. And of course, Ms. Frederick is welcome to go out and verify that in the field. So for the purposes of the four corners of the cease and correct order, that has been, that has been complied with. And we understand that the commission is interested in evaluating beyond that. But for purposes of the cease and correct order, that is a determination that can be made. My client is prepared to continue to hold position while the scope and substance of a permit is proposed, prepared, and submitted. And so leave that to your consideration. The, I think at this point, Mr. Greenberg has a couple of comments. And then David Lord, who gave you a preview of the fact that he's been to the site and has some observations to share. And then Chuck Mandell. I do have in my possession a, an early draft of the site plan to which reference was made in the order. And so I can, if I were given permission to share my screen, at some point, I am able to project that for the commission's, for the agency's information. So unless you have questions of me at this point, I would invite Mr. Greenberg.
This is Commissioner Boda, Attorney Shansky. I just have one question for you. You said that Mr. Greenberg is prepared to hold position. Can you clarify what you, what you mean by that?
To remain without furthering his aspirations pending application and permission from the agency.
So is the, this Commissioner Bass, what is the short stance with hold position, meaning no activity?
Correct, and I'm sorry that's so obtuse.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay, so I guess it's, it's my turn. So thank you guys so much for your time tonight. I really want to begin by saying in no way was it my intention to create a violation of this regulation. In retrospect, the conversation I had with Ms. Frederick may not have been detailed enough. And as Marjorie mentioned, we have commissioned a team to help backfill the necessary pieces to obtain the proper permits. Just by way of background, sports truly has been a part of my life since I was a little kid. And the greatest memories and learning experiences I've certainly ever had, three sports. I played in high school, baseball, basketball, and soccer, went to college for, on a baseball scholarship, played in the major leagues, got hit in the head, my first pitch in the big leagues. But, you know, I was a color analyst for ESPN, wrote a book about my experiences and do a lot of motivational speaking and donate a lot of my time to charities. And part of that time is also through private lessons that I was doing just for, for free and donations for, you know, just to give back. And as a, as a father of three children, they're starting to get into sports and playing baseball, basketball, soccer, and football. And, you know, just a little bit about how we acquired the property. It was, it was very unfortunate. It was through the death of my, my wife's identical twin sister. And it was never our ideal property or way we ever wanted to acquire anything. But we really tried over the years to make it our home and feel like our home. COVID came and we all got kind of locked down, as everyone knows. And sports fields were closed, parks, recreational activities. And really, unless you had those things on your property, you weren't able to participate. And we don't have a piece of flat land on the property that, you know, we're able to utilize at this time. And one other thing is that the last two years, chasing balls in the woods because of what I just mentioned, I ended up contracting two different cases of Lyme disease and was hospitalized and out of commission for, for two months each time. So, you know, with the future being unknown with COVID and only so many years at home with my kids, I really just want to give my family an opportunity to have that recreational opportunity at our own home and all the while keeping the sentimental value of the home in the family. And, you know, as we, as Marjorie spoke and pointed out after my conversation with Ms. Frederick in the early stages, before I did start any sort of work, I did commission Stevenson Associates to come out. And as Ms. Frederick pointed out, those, those stakes, whether it be the blue stakes for the inland wetland review area or the orange stakes behind those stakes showing and showcasing the property line. You know, we did everything that we, we could to outline and make sure we stayed outside of that review area. And then also I did have a plan with John Cunningham with, with respect to any trees that were removed to at minimumly replace those trees on the perimeter of the property for protection of the wetlands and the wildlife and also protection for, from any neighbors that disturbance could have been caused. So I just really appreciate your time tonight and giving me an opportunity to share my sentiments. So thank you.
Before continuing, Jamie, did you know additional commissioner came on board after we took the roll call? You got that?
I somehow didn't notice even though I let her in.
All right, just make sure the record reflects that. Thank you. You guys can continue. I know you said that, I think, both David and
Just for Katie, I'm not sure if she knows Clarice is the additional commissioner.
Right.
Yeah, she, she texted me on the phone and said that it was her. So we're all set.
Okay, thank you. I think Mr. Mandell and David Lord have some comments as well.
Yes, if it would be okay, Mr. Chairman, I would like to hear from Mr. Lord.
Okay.
Okay, this is David. If I could just ask, I think Chuck's part of the information background would be beneficial to have prior to my comments. Just, I think it would be a little bit smoother from my perspective anyway in presenting the information that I found this afternoon.
Very well, I beg your pardon, Mr. Mandell.
Yeah, so Marjorie, if you'd be so kind to share the existing conditions plan that we prepared.
Give you permission.
I need to be abled.
Thank you, Marjorie.
Try now.
Excellent, maybe if you zoom out a little bit so we can get a perspective where we are. Okay, thank you very much. Chuck Mandell, working with Tom Stevens at Associates Civil Engineers Land Surveyors. Adam was correct and Jamie was correct. We went out there and we did place witness stakes with blue flagging along the 100-foot review line, specifically on Adam's, on the Greenberg property. And we also staked out the property line within that area. We subsequently went out there after being contacted by Mr. Greenberg about the cease and correct order. We went out, we did some topography and we did some locations of the specific area. So we went out and we located the silt fence and that's the dark So we went out and we located the silt fence, and that's the dark line work. It's a dashed line, that's the silt fence that as it's existing. We went out and we did get the wetlands pocket on Mr. Greenberg's property, which was on the subdivision map. We also noticed that the wetlands did extend to the west a little bit. So we went out and we located that wetlands line, and it keeps going to the west. And we did show the offset, we do have a hundred foot review line as shown. So on the western edge by the property line, the actual wetlands, we are a little bit into the review zone, and actually we have an area of disturbance within the review zone, that's about twenty nine hundred square feet of disturbed area. And it's really just woodchips that are placed there, but woodchips would be considered a disturbance. It didn't appear that there was any, there was some minor grading, the edge of the baseball court is actually encroaching in, within that hundred foot review area. Let's see, so we located the basketball area also, and there's just to the east of the basketball area, there is a tree well of stones that looks like it protected. So yes, there was, it appears there, there was some fill brought in to level off the base for the basketball court. There was also a driveway, alternate driveway that was put in for construction access that runs east to west behind the house, and that's a dashed line. That's a stone, and I don't know if Adams intending on keeping that driveway, I'm not really sure at this point. But this is the conditions as they exist today. So we didn't show any plantings, it was cobbled together fairly quickly, so we could get, so the commission can quantify what happened out there.
Mr. Mandell, this is Commissioner Bota, so you reviewed the, the silt fence line, you reviewed the wetland line. There is another dashed line that is sort of interior to the purple solid line. And it looks like it's got some, maybe some lettering, I don't know, it's too small. It's, oh, O B L.
Oh, B, that's the building, that's the building line, that's the building setback line.
So then where, so then where is, do you have a line that shows the, the conservation easement?
Yes.
To the area of disturbance.
Right, so that, you can see the conservation restriction line that runs north to south as Marjorie's showing right there. Do you see that, Commissioner?
Yes, thank you.
So it's that, that entire area and going west.
Thank you.
And I guess that's a good lead off for you, David, unless the commission has any other questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Lord.
Okay. I was out to the site this afternoon. Took a number of photographs of certain areas of the site. I primarily focused on the areas inside this existing sediment filter fence where there has been some disturbance of existing vegetation, or what I'm assuming to be existing vegetation to the extent that there's bare soil up inside the sediment filter fence. Outside the silt fence, there are areas where some vegetation has been cut, but not actually stumped or removed. There are also a, a number of instances where sizable trees have not been removed from the site, still exist today within and outside of the existing sediment filter fence. I have those photographs, and at the appropriate time, I'll be happy to share those with all parties. There does not appear to be any soil erosion occurring. The sediment filter fence is in proper installation, in my opinion. I have seen the marks where the blue flagging shows the limit of your upland review zone, your hundred foot upland review zone. I have some photographs along those lines from point to point. They give the commission an understanding of exactly what's going on within the upland review zone down to the sediment filter fence. That's the gist of what I have done presently. I'm going to be discussing this with Mr. Greenberg, but mentioning the restoration replanting of native trees and shrubs in those areas that were disturbed. And that is a, a matter for another session, but we have begun the discussion of those particular elements inside the hundred foot upland review zone at this point in time. With that, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions members may have.
Mr. Lord, this is Commissioner Bassman, you, you said you had some pictures at that hundred foot demarcation point?
Yes, relative to the existing silt fence and some of the obvious visible signs within the area that we're talking about right now, the areas inside your upland review zone. They're still on my camera because literally I took them around five o'clock this afternoon. So I don't have any way to share them at this point in time.
Thank you.
I have one question. So the wetland offsite, did you pick that up from the subdivision map? Or was there a new investigation done?
So Jamie, that was, this Chuck Mandell, so I went out there and I flagged the, I'm not a soil scientist, but it was very apparent and David can verify it. But I did notice it mimicked from the other subdivision map from the GIS that Branford had. So it looks like those were actually flagged wetlands that are in that one area, so we did correspond with that. And David can verify that, will adjust that if that's necessary.
This is Commissioner Bagman, can somebody show, I see the green line for the conservation restriction, and then is north way over, can somebody orient me north, south, east, west?
Here's the north arrow.
I saw that, so that's okay. So west is down to the bottom of the page.
Conventionally, yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
This is Commissioner Bassman, Jamie, you were on the property at some point or not?
Yeah, yes, it was I believe like the eighteenth or something like that, that I went out on the property.
Okay, with, with the correction on the erosion controls, is it your position that the site, the site at this point is stable?
Yeah, I believe if the erosion controls are installed properly, based on the, the photos and David Lord's comments, it sounds like they are. I think also with the woodchips surrounding the area of activity, that it's stable for the time being. There shouldn't be any imminent erosion, sedimentation issues.
Thank you. It, it sounds like from Attorney Shansky's comments that at this point you have a team pulling together, I guess, all the appropriate issues for the submission of an application? My understanding of what's your plan at this point?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
And as part and parcel of, I guess, reviewing that application when it hits, it seems to me, given the amount of activity and the conservation deed restriction area, that it would be appropriate for the commission to conduct a site walk on this property? Would that be acceptable to the, to the applicant at this point?
Subsequent to the preparation of the application?
Yes.
Yes, I believe that would be conventional too, yes.
Jamie, we should probably wait for the application to do the site walk, I assume.
I would think unless the commission has any immediate concerns, I think it would make sense wait until after an application is submitted. Because then it would be part of the review of that application.
Right, and, and at this point, you indicated it's, it's stable and David Lord indicated that from his standpoint, it's stable, so we're not looking at a, an erosion problem at the moment.
This is Commissioner Bota. I'm a little stymied, this is work clearing that has been done within a conservation easement. And, and we've talked in the past, we've been given guidance before that an application is not a permit, and an application is not the way to resolve a violation or a cease and correct order like this. So there's a reason for a conservation easement. And you know, while I can certainly empathize with, you know, a homeowner that is trying to do work to, what in their opinion is improve their property, it's still a conservation easement, and I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I'm not really clear on why we would not be looking for the restoration plan for the property. Because that, that is what the purpose of that portion of the property is, is conservation.
So yeah, I think there's kind of two different possible ways of going forward with this, and the commission has to consider what's the right way to go. One is it's a violation, it needs to be put back the way, it needs to be put back in a natural state, in which case it stays in the cease and correct order process and gets resolved that way. If owner resident wants to submit an application to try and move forward with these additional activities that have not been conducted yet, then that would be an application. So.
I mean, so again, Commissioner Bota, I, I think anyone always can put forward an application. Period, right? Anybody can always put forward an application, and the property owner is certainly welcome to do that. I, I think that this, I, I cannot been on the commission since two thousand and one, I cannot remember a time when a conservation easement was then turned into developed property. And my concern is that if the, the commission as part of a permit for a property or subdivision sets aside conservation easement, and then a homeowner can just go and develop it and say, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have done that. And still gets to maintain that developed property, what is the point of the conservation easement? It, it, you know, at that point, it becomes an issue where it's better to say, I'm sorry than may I. And there's no point in having wet, wetland regulations and conservation easements. So I think that now moving forward with just not waiting for an application would set precedent for this commission, and I think that the commission needs to think very, very carefully about the implications of this kind of precedent. Because I, I don't ever remember anything like that happening in the past twenty years.
Chairman, you do have a hand raised.
Yes, Attorney Shansky, you have a comment.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the comments of the commissioner. But this is not a conservation easement, which is why I discussed it a bit in my introductory comments. It's a conservation restriction. The agency is not the holder of a nonpossessory interest in the conservation document. The commission is simply referred to as essentially as a recitation of what the regulations require for activity that occurs within your jurisdiction. So again, we can, we, we are here to correct, to respond to the absence of a permit. But it is not a conservation easement, it's a conservation restriction. And the reason that there is no call for a restoration is because the cease and correct order does not call for a restoration. That's why I went through the three prongs of what was, what was called for in the order. The order was to acknowledge receipt, to attend tonight's meeting, to prepare a site plan or to provide it if we had it, now I've, I've shown it to you and I'm going to transmit it to Ms. Frederick. And as soon as possible, correctly install the soil erosion and sediment controls. The agency certainly has the ability to further discuss what is interesting to them, but in terms of our compliance with the requirements of the order, we have established that those have been met. And with respect to the conservation document, not an easement. So I, I say that I, I would not get overly concerned about precedential value if you're comparing it to circumstances where you have had actual conservation easements, where there have been violations. I think this is one of those classic land use, facts and circumstances, cases where we have to deal with the documentation that we have. And for whatever reason, in two thousand and two, the wetlands agency accepted this conservation restriction as being responsive to the interests of the agency at that time. So those are important legal distinctions, your point is certainly well taken. But I think that under the circumstance, there is latitude for what we have posited this evening. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Bassman, I, you know, given the legal ease that you have expressed, especially with the term restriction, as opposed to our understanding of that conservation easement, I think it'd probably behooves this commission to look for town council to weigh in on the legal merit or not of the position that you're taking. Before we can, you know, agree that it's a restriction at this point.
So I would like to just comment, in my letter, I did call it a conservation easement, which was wrong. I, it is a conservation restriction. Conservation restrictions can be in favor of the commission and oftentimes are. I have to admit, looking at the language, it's kind of unclear as to who one and two on the restriction is in favor of. And then in three, it's, it's directive, it says the following are prohibited unless written permission is granted by the inland wetlands and watercourses agency as noted, and then it lists off the removal of living and dead vegetation. And also planting of grass or other vegetations permitted with, with permission of the agency. And no fertilizer, herbicides or other pesticides shall be applied or used except with permission of the agency. So I think there might be room for clarification, if that's something the commission is interested in. I also want to point out that in number two of the cease and correct order, I do tell them to attend tonight's meeting, and I said the commission will review the activity and determine what is required to resolve the violation. I didn't want to say they had to submit a restoration plan because I knew that the property owner was interested in trying to pursue keeping, and we're moving forward with the outlined projects. So I wanted to have the commission review and make a decision and move forward, especially since we were able to set the special meeting to meet sooner and start the discussion and get some action moving forward. Here, you have another raised hand, I believe.
Attorney Shansky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that seeking advice of counsel is a perfect idea. I think that I think that the other two thoughts I have have flown out of my head, so I think that's a perfect idea, and we are well underway. I mean, we are, we are fully, you have the full attention of Mr. Greenberg, Mr. Mandell, Mr. Lord and myself and John Cunningham. So we are trying, we are attempting to reconcile the interests of the agency and the property owner.
And any other thoughts from other commissioners?
So this is Commissioner Bota, I, I think what I, what I would be looking for, for clarity is a restoration plan. You're certainly also, everyone is entitled to put in an application. Everyone is entitled to put in an application and for that application to be considered fairly. Based on our rules and regulations. But I would first and foremost, and I do recognize that based on the letter. For our cease and correct meeting that you've met in good faith, the the components that Jamie outlined. And what I would be looking for is a restoration plan that. Aligns with the. Original permit as well as the. Conservation restriction language.
This is Commissioner Bassman. Commissioner Boda, is that something that. You feel should precede any application that might be filed?
This is Commissioner Boda. I I don't know that that's. That's not really for me to say. I I think that. That. Restoration plan should come with all due speed. But if the property owner, I I I don't, I'm not gonna put. That. In front of it. Because they could, they could have both, but I I wouldn't. I I would like to see the restoration plan. I I wouldn't, I don't know that I would be. I I don't know, I have to take it into account what comes in, so if an application comes in, it comes in. That's not for me to predetermine. But I would like to see a restoration plan with all due speed.
So if the commission is. So the commission needs to decide whether to uphold the order, uphold and modify or overturn. And if you're looking to require a restoration plan as part of the cease and correct order, it'd be to uphold and modify, I think. Providing a timeframe when you're expecting to have received that restoration plan by. Would be good for all parties so that everyone knows what the expected timeframes are. They want to discuss a little bit. What's a reasonable time, just so that way there's no hiccups down the road and we don't end up. So. I don't know if any additional commissioners have any additional thoughts. The. Permit for the subdivision. Approval required a copy of the restriction be submitted to the inland land agency. It's our current practice to require it be submitted for review prior to filing. It was not the practice back then, so. I don't know whether or not this language was reviewed prior to it being filed, or if it was just submitted to the agency after filing, which would have been compliant with the condition of approval.
Attorney Shansky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the risk of making myself unpopular by having something to say. I would, I would simply encourage that the commission might want to obtain the advice of counsel. Before doing something radical that. That puts the applicant or the putative applicant to cross purposes in both attempting a permit and providing a restoration plan. That's my thought.
This is Commissioner Bassman, I, you know, the the issues that Commissioner Boda has addressed. Are are totally of environmental concern, has nothing to do with. The restrict, the the language used. And and so the concern is that we have this relatively. Aggressive development of property that was. Supposed to be left pristine. So a restoration. Activity, a restoration plan. To remove that activity would be part and parcel of. Going forward and upholding the conservation. A deed. Restriction or whatever we want to call it at this point. So I I don't know that I would want to necessarily wait. For town council, they seems to be, we could pursue a parallel path. And if your team can pull that together. It sounds like that would be something that. Would be worthwhile for all parties concerned.
Mr. Chairman, I beg your pardon. Mr. Chairman, that would still require application for a permit, though, correct?
Well, that that's an independent choice, I think is. Where where I, after I listening to Commissioner Boda, the. That that that's separate and distinct from the idea that the restoration plan needs to come forward.
But doesn't the restoration plan have to be cloaked within a permit?
No, I don't, I I I'm not sure. Jamie, is that corrected on?
I don't believe so. So as part of a cease and correct order, generally. It's been state, it's been guidance at training such as CACUIC that. There's a violation, it'd be handled through a violation. So if there's a cease and correct order, the cease and correct order requires the restoration. You don't make it an application because then it's, that's a separate process. If there's additional activity that wants, that that the permit or the. Property owner wants to conduct, then that activity that hasn't been conducted yet, they would need to submit. A permit application requesting permission to do those activities. Whereas at this point with the cease and correct order, if the commission determines that. A restoration plan is required, the commission is directing the. Violator, the home, the property owner, that they need to restore the property and they need to submit a plan of how they're going to restore the property. I do think it gets a little bit tricky if an application is submitted. I think at that point. You're gonna kind of have the table. If if you're pursuing. A restoration plan.
I I would simply call, I beg your pardon, I apologize. I I call the distinction from the description that you just gave, Ms. Frederick, that. Restoration is not part of the cease and correct order. So while I appreciate you relying on the. Sentence that says the commission will review the activity and determine what is required to resolve the violation. I don't know that we can. Impute from that, that that means including restoration, maybe it does. But in any case, the team is assembled and. We're here and you're the agency and we're not.
And the agency can decide whether they're gonna uphold the order or uphold and modify.
Yeah, and I I guess that was the second comment that the Ms. Fredericks had, which was the cease and correct could be modified at tonight's meeting. If the commission so chooses. And then it would continue as a cease and correct with the, in this case, restoration plan added as one of the requirements. Is that? Their summary of. What you just said, Jamie?
Yes, yeah, that that would. Be the takeaway.
Chuck Mandel, I'm I'm reading the conservation restriction. And I'm just specifically looking at three B. And it says, no planting of grass, other vegetation, restoration, that's my quote, is permitted permitted except with permission of the agency. So how do we get written permission unless we do an application? Is that something that's just done? Because it just specifically says written permission. So how do we get written permission without an application?
Sounds to me, I don't I don't know that we've seen. A restoration plan recently, Jamie, but it would seem to me that a plan could be prepared, labeled. Restoration plan for this property goes to the. Staff, staff reviews it and brings it forward to the commission.
Yeah, so generally speaking, the process is that if the commission requires a plan. That it would be submitted, it'd be reviewed by the commission and then the commission would make a decision whether or not to accept that plan. And so there would be a follow, written up. Letter sent. Documenting whether or not that restoration plan is approved.
So so an application is not required, you're saying?
It's part of the restoration of a violation, if it. If it was restoration due to natural storm activity, then I would assume in that sense. Probably be an application unless you were going to try and make an argument for. Conservation as of right.
Oh, I was just curious what written permission meant, that's all, because as of right, even as of right, applications require an application. Okay, thank you.
This is Commissioner Begamon. Would it make sense to uphold the cease and correct? That would mean that the applicant would have to start a restoration plan, and not the applicant, the. Greenberg and all would have to do.
To uphold and modify if you're looking for a restoration plan.
We would have.
Another option that is available that hasn't been discussed is the commission could. Continue this conversation to the regular meeting and ask for advice from town council. If that's something that the commission feels would be. Beneficial.
Well, this is Commissioner Begmon again. What I was trying to get out would be that. We need advice from town council about the restoration, about the conservation restriction versus easement. And. Seems like we need to get that as soon as possible, so I. Would support what you just said, Jamie. Get advice from council and. Continue this at the next meeting.
See, I think rather. Upholding or or any, or upholding and modifying in that situation, you would be continuing. And not actually making a decision until you have the information that you feel you need to make a decision.
But I'm I'm a little confused, this Commissioner Bassman. What what would town council? Comment. On the conservation easement slash restriction. Have to do with the notion of the property being developed. Outside of the conservation easement rules, is it, are we expecting? Are we expecting the decision if it were to say, no, it's a restriction, not an easement and therefore. It doesn't have the same, the the agency doesn't have the same power that it, we thought it had. I, you know, I I I don't, I don't want to lose the notion necessarily of a re- a restoration. And I'm I'm wondering how town council resolves that issue.
So I think aside from the restriction versus easement question, there's the question that was raised as to. I don't, I don't know if I'm using the best wording here, but who is the restriction in favor of? Who has? The ability to enforce the restriction. I think, like I said, number three, it clearly directs that the inland land agency has to provide. Permission, written permission. One and two. I'm not sure, but certainly there was vegetation removed. And. The commission would like, well, the the conservation restriction language back up. But. I I think it's not simply a matter of whether it's a restriction or an easement. It it it's, it says conservation restriction right on the document. It's a restriction. An easement implies that it's giving somebody access as well in addition to the restriction. It's not an easement. Have another raised hand.
So if we, if we precipitate this down, our choices are continue to the next meeting. I I guess getting advice from council. Not, I guess. At this point, looking for. A restoration plan. Or we amend the. Cease and correct. To require a restoration plan, maybe put a date in there. Are there other options that we need to consider as a commission?
Well, your other options would be to. Not uphold the cease and correct order or to. Uphold it as written, but I don't think either of those have been expressed as interests. Did you have a raised hand? I'm not sure if you want to open it up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Attorney Shansky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two things, one is, I remember one of the other comments I wanted to make when Ms. Frederick was. Construing the paragraph. Paragraphs one, two and three in the restriction that it's only in paragraph three that invokes the inland wetlands agency and. Under sort of normal rules of construction. If they were meant to be applied to all three, then that prefectory language. About the agency would be up there before number one, so that is a distinction that has legal significance. But the other thing I wanted to say is, and this is why I made those comments at the beginning, which are only given life now, apparently. Enforcing the conservation restriction, which is not, which which you are not the grantee of. Is a question of whether you have standing to do that, but you never lose standing to enforce the regulations. So having cloaked this as a violation of the conservation easement, which it's not an easement. Has maybe had, you know, sort of a diffuse. Ability to have the conversation in a straight line, so. From from the very rich conversation that the agency has had, it seems to me that it benefits all parties to. Continue this, to seek the advice of council. And to refashion what the agency is doing under the regulations and not necessarily. Given what council may or may not say to you, under the conservation restriction. Those are really two separate things, but your. Jurisdiction of your regulations is forever. So thank you, thank you on behalf of all of us. I'll try to. Not have anything more to say.
So. One more point, Mr. Chairman, I'm just reading the conservation restriction again, and it says. Now therefore Vigliotti Construction Company does hereby impose upon said areas the following restrictions. So it appears to me, it was. Vigliotti Construction is the one that imposed it and it's the volume eight sixty-eight, page nine forty-three, which is states right there. And now, now I'll be quiet. Thank you.
So Jamie Frederick and the land agent, I again, I admit I had a typo in the letter. It is conservation restriction. It still does. Violate the conservation restriction, number three, that no living. Dead trees stubbornly removed without written permission from the agency, but it should say conservation restriction. Which I can keep noted, should the commission continue this or. Any. Possible decisions. The next meeting or should be noted, should the commission decide to move forward with them? And actions.
Does any commissioner have a issue by? Not just continuing this discussion until the next regular meeting. I think, given the nature of the season correct, we need to take a roll call vote. So I I I guess the the motion that.
Wait a minute. Are you making a motion or are you just, you get a general consensus?
General consensus. And then I guess my question is, do we need a roll call vote? On a cease and correct?
You get a roll call vote when you're making a decision, I guess.
Okay, so continuation would not.
I think you can stay on the record, when and where you're continuing it to. Much like you would with a public hearing and that would be sufficient. But I think there should be a general consensus. That's what the commission wants to do, and if that's the case, I think that. We should make sure that I have. A list of the concerns that the commission would like for me to either ask town council or do further research on. In the inland office. I currently have as things that. Were listed. Conservation restriction versus conservation easement, who is the grantee and does the commission have standing? In regards to the conservation restrictions.
And and I guess Jamie, one for. This Commissioner Bassman, one for for staff maybe is. Where there has been. Conservation restrictions or easements, I guess, over the last. Ten fifteen years. Have any of them resulted in? Development of those areas, either all or a portion?
I am not aware of any. At least. I'm not aware of any. I'd say that there's some out there that have something that shouldn't be there. And I'm certainly not aware of any that received approval from the commission for. Structures, things like that. I don't know if you would consider. A basketball court, a structure. I mean, I personally wouldn't consider it a natural state, but then you get into that whole question of one, two and three. And what applies to who?
This is Commissioner Begamon. Would we also want to know? When you uphold this. From council, if we uphold the cease and correct. That triggers a restoration. And if somebody then submits an application. What do we do in that process? Thank you. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Bota. I think I would also ask a slightly broader question of town council who hopefully will would secure land use, a land use resource person. But I, I, I think the questions have been very pointed and I would want to know, given this situation and given all of the facts of the case, what authority does the commission have in order to meet the the, the language and the intent of the permit that was issued?
In permit, you mean the subdivision permit?
Subdivision, yeah.
Anybody else? Okay. I think we, let's see, the next meeting is when, Jamie?
Next meeting is, let me just make sure I don't mess up. August eleventh at seven PM and it will be held remotely soon.
Thank you.
Is everyone, or everyone able to attend the August eleventh meeting?
Yes. Yes.
Attending from vacation.
I, this Commissioner Pavantonis. Jamie, when Commissioner Begamon joined the meeting, did that cause am I necessary for a quorum?
Well, for, for tonight. No, well, I mean, I think we're about to wrap things up. So but you, in August, we'll, we'll hopefully have enough people, but we can discuss that if you're concerned.
It, it's my intention to recuse myself from the situation. So I just want to make that known.
Okay. Thank you for letting us know.
This is Commissioner Begamon. I, I'll attend the August eleventh.
Thank you, Team Greenberg, for joining us tonight and we'll see you all on the eleventh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No moves.
Wonderful. Good night, everybody.
Night.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.